Call to order, the December 12th, 2022, meeting of Plymouth Township Council. Please rise for the pledged allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We'll start tonight. We have, tonight we have three recognitions that we would like to present. And just to summarize briefly to begin, as we know, every ten years, our state legislative districts are redrawn based on the census. And in this past census count from 2020, our districts were redrawn here in Plymouth. And we have three representatives at the state level, Representative Matt Bradford, State Representative Mary Jo Daly, and State Senator Amanda Capelletti, who have been redistricted and will no longer represent Plymouth Township, as we now move into the 54th State House District and the 12th State Senate District. So tonight, we would like to recognize and thank Representative Bradford, Representative Daly, and State Senator Capelletti for their service and their commitments to Plymouth Township, representing us in Harrisburg. So we have three recognitions tonight. I will start with a recognition for State Representative Matthew Bradford, whereas Plymouth Township Council wishes to express its gratitude to State Representative Matthew D. Bradford for his years of service representing the residents of Plymouth Township. And whereas due to redistricting from the 2020 census, State Representative Matthew D. Bradford's district will no longer include Plymouth Township. And whereas Representative Bradford has served in the Pennsylvania State Legislature for 14 years, serving as state committee, state government committee, and serving two terms as the appropriations chair. And whereas Representative Bradford has served the 70th Legislative District, including Plymouth Township, since 2012. And whereas Representative Bradford and his staff have contributed to improving the lives of Plymouth residents through responsive communication and assistance, helping to secure an RACP grant for Harmonville Fire Company, and playing an instrumental role in the planning and development for the Lafayette Street Slip Ramp. Representative Bradford has built a reputation as a bipartisan consensus builder, both locally and in Harrisburg. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of Plymouth Township hereby recognizes Matthew D. Bradford for his contributions to our community and his outstanding representation of our residents, adopted this 12th day of December 2022 by Plymouth Township Council. And I would like to make a motion that we approve this recognition.
So moved.
A motion from Ms. Bramblett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from, actually, I made the motion. I made the motion. Second, second from Ms. Bramblett. Any comments or questions from council? And I would just like to add, I personally would like to thank Representative Bradford as he's been somewhat of a mentor for me and assisted me in my transition into local government. And I know he'll still be there to help us. And I appreciate all that he has done for us over the years. Comments or questions from the audience? Yeah, is Mr. Ash here?
Yeah, I'm from State Representative Matt Bradford's office. Thank you so much for this honor. This means a lot to us. And I'll absolutely love the State Representative. That's so sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is amazing. Thanks for having us.
Sure. Any additional comments from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote to approve this recognition. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. We have a plaque for you guys to take back with you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
And our next recognition is for State Representative Mary Jo Daly, and I will hand that one over to Ms. Bramblett.
Thank you. Whereas Plymouth Township Council wishes to express its gratitude to State Representative Mary Jo Daly for her years of service representing the residents of Plymouth Township. And whereas due to redistricting from the 2020 census, State Representative Mary Jo Daly's district will no longer include Plymouth Township. And whereas Representative Daly has served in the Pennsylvania State Legislature for 10 years, serving on the Finance, Health, and Appropriations Committees, and as the Chair on the Tourism and Recreational Development Committees. And whereas Representative Daly has served the 148th Legislative District, including Plymouth Township, since 2012. And whereas Representative Daly and her staff have contributed to improving the lives of Plymouth residents through responsive communication and assistance. She has fought time and again for sustainable funding for public education, environmental safeguards, better health care, and continues to vigorously defend women's rights. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of Plymouth Township hereby recognizes Mary Jo Daly for her contributions to our community and her outstanding representation of our residents, adopted this 12th day of December 2022. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this recognition of State Representative Mary Jo Daly.
There's a motion from Ms. Bramblett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Is Representative Daly here? I see Senator Capelletti pointing over there.
You know, I do have some comments, if I may.
Ms. Bramblett has a few words. You're not off the hook yet. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to add that, you know, I summarized some of the things that Representative Daly has done for Plymouth Township. But I just want to let everybody know that she worked hard to get redevelopment assistance capital program applications, securing grants, won a $5.75 million award for the Mission Kids Child Advocacy Center of Montgomery County. That center serves the abused, neglected, and trafficked children of Montgomery County, something I'm very familiar with. And I know how important it was for the Mission Kids Center to get that grant. She also was instrumental in getting a $1.975 million award for our Harmonville Fire Company. She has worked across the aisle to develop House Bill 1155. If enacted, that bill will protect our municipal recreation programs right here in our Plymouth parks and our Plymouth Community Center from being reclassified as child daycare centers. That will mean a lot to us continuing our recreational programs. And this bill has not yet passed, but it will be proposed again in the next session. So I just wanted to add some of those specifics of what Representative Mary Jo Daly has done for us. And I have really enjoyed working with you, Representative. Thank you. That's it.
May I also add just personally that, Mary Jo, you've been a delight to work with, your staff, you. It's so very helpful in environmental issues, so many other things. You know, the different meetings we've had in constituent homes. I've always appreciated your help and your input. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from council or from the audience? Yeah, just your name and whether or not you're a Plymouth Township resident.
Hi, Marlene Chaykin. I am Plymouth Township resident. I live in Plymouth Alcondos. Mary Jo, it has been a pleasure getting to know you and working with you. I feel very honored. And I hope that I still get a chance to stay in touch with you. Thank you so much for all you've done.
Anything additional? We didn't vote on this yet, did we? Well, on this recognition, we will do a, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor.
You didn't talk about how I came into your classroom.
I have a lot of students here. They're good to see you right now.
Thank you so much. You have done so much for Plymouth Township. Thank you, thank you. Oh, my God. You're lovely, Miss Towns. It's so good to see you. I'm going to miss you too. I don't really know you. You must be very good if you're here. Thank you so much. Can I just say thank you?
Sure. I always should have asked you, like, let you speak first. Go ahead. The floor is yours. The floor is yours.
Well, I just want to say that it was always a pleasure working with Plymouth Township because working with the manager was easy. Working with, you know, the township council members was just really terrific always. And I'm going to miss you. I have to say, I'm closer to home. My new office is 1.6 miles from my house. I can actually walk home and have lunch.
Or drive.
But, but the time that I spent representing was just really special to me because I just loved, you know, some of the things you've done there, your parks, you know, getting that farm preserved. That was a really fun thing.
That's right. You should have mentioned that, too.
No, no, no.
Maple Acres, everybody.
Maple Acres, yeah.
Permanent agricultural preservation. Thank you.
So many people fought for that. And I think that it's just been a really special place to me. My first 10 years belong to my next, at least two years. Let's see how this goes. But I see so many faces of people that I recognize. So I really, really loved being your representative. And I know I didn't represent the whole township, but it was really great. So thank you so much. This is really meaningful to me. I really appreciate it.
That's a good picture.
A picture would be wonderful.
Otherwise, it never happened.
One, two, three. I have to say, it's a treat to see you.
It's very nice.
It's been ages.
It's been a very long time. And because all good things come in threes, our final recognition is for State Senator Amanda Capelletti, and I'll hand it over to Ms. Visio.
Whereas Plymouth Township Council wishes to express its gratitude to State Senator Amanda Capelletti for her years of service representing the residents of Plymouth Township. And whereas due to redistricting from the 2020 census, State Senator Amanda Capelletti's district will no longer include Plymouth Township. And whereas Senator Capelletti has served in the Pennsylvania State Legislature for two years, serving as the Chair of the Community Economic and Recreational Development Committee, and as a member of the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee, the Banking and Insurance Committee, the Health and Human Services Committee, and the Judiciary Committee. And whereas Senator Capelletti has served the 17th Senatorial District, including Plymouth Township, since 2020. And whereas Senator Capelletti has been an active voice in the fight for action on climate change, introducing Go 100 PA, a plan to put Pennsylvania on track to reach 100% renewable energy. She's fought for action to address the increasing gun violence epidemic by introducing legislation that would enact a 72-hour waiting period for all firearms transfers and require the safe storage of firearms. She serves as the co-chair of the Pennsylvania Women's Health Caucus in fights for accessible and affordable health care, including reproductive health care for all Pennsylvanians. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of Plymouth Township hereby recognizes Amanda Capelletti for her contributions to our community and her outstanding representation of our residents, adopted this 12th day of December 2022 by Plymouth Township Council.
Is there a motion to approve this recognition?
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Visio, second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or additional questions from council?
I actually just wanted to add a few things that were close to home, also in terms of banking. Senator Capelletti, she has secured a number of notable or specific grants, projects, and legislations, including securing $200,000 in funding for our Harmonville Fire Company and $250,000 in funding for the East Plymouth Valley Park improvements. She sponsored a free shredding event for Plymouth Township residents. Senator Capelletti also hosted Plymouth White Marsh High School students at her first annual Good Government Summit on Environmental Stewardship at Cabrini University. And she participated in Plymouth White Marsh High School Good Citizen Program. All wonderful things close to home. Thank you.
Ms. Visio. Additional comments or questions from council?
I would just like to thank Senator Capelletti, because I got to know her a little bit last year as I was going around talking to residents in the township. And she really taught me a lot about how to communicate with the people that you represent and how to represent them well. Very important to me and I hold that very closely. Thank you very much.
Additional comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote to approve this recognition. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Senator Capelletti, come on up.
Thank you. I'm going to miss you. Thank you, guys. This was really sweet. I wish my time serving Plymouth could have been longer. You guys are really only right down the road from me. I'm in East Norrington. But saying that, I'm only right down the road. I'm still a friend, and I'm still happy to help out however I can because, you know, you can help the communities in your backyard. You're helping your whole community. So I know Senator Clutt will be a wonderful representative for you guys, and I will work closely with her to make sure that the things we've worked on together so far will continue to be pushed forward.
And before we let you off the hook, I believe John Hoffman from Harmonville has a presentation that he'd also like to make to the three of you.
Yes, we're going to make ours. Nice and sweet. But we just wanted to, we need to begin acknowledge the three voices and names tonight that helped support us in our transition of making a new fire company and new station for this township. Something that's going to be here for the next 30, 50 years and is going to provide for the citizens of Plymouth Township. So we appreciate State Representative Mary Jo Daly, State Representative Matt Bradford, and State Senator Amanda Capelletti for all their efforts in helping fund and making this project actually. So we appreciate it. Thank you guys very much.
And of course, the three of you and anybody who's here with you, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or if you'd want to, if you'd want to exit, we won't not be offended. We'll just come to one of your meetings and leave early someday. Okay, is there, before we move into the agenda, is there any public comment about the agenda itself? Seeing none, an announcement that an executive session was held on November 28th, 2022, and an executive session was held on December 5th, 2022. At this time, I will ask council for approval of the minutes from the following meetings, approval of the meeting, minutes of the workshop meeting from November 9th, approval of the minutes of a special hearing and meeting on November 14th, approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on November 14th, approval of the minutes from our budget meeting on November 15th, and approval of our minutes from the special meeting on November 28th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Whitney, second from Ms. Visio. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Approval of departmental reports and bills, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Bandish, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to administration, tonight we have our 2023 budget ordinance for first and final consideration, and I will hand it over to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Manero. This is an ordinance pursuant to Section 702. D of the Home Rule Charter, adopting the operating and capital budgets, expenditures, and expenses for the fiscal year 2023, and levying a real estate tax on all property within the township for the fiscal year 2023 at the rate of 1.9 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of 19 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation, and levying a separate assessment dedicated to the Plymouth Township Fire Services on all property within the township for the fiscal year 2023 at the rate of .72 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of 7.2 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. The Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, does hereby enact and ordain the following. Section 1, pursuant to Section 702D of the Home Rule Charter, council does hereby adopt the operating and capital budgets, expenditures, and expenses for the fiscal year 2023 attached to this ordinance, and such amounts are hereby appropriated from the fund equities, revenues, and other financing sources available for the year 2023 for the specific purposes set forth in the attached. Section 2, pursuant to Section 702D of the Home Rule Charter, council does hereby levy a tax on all real property within the township subject to taxation for the fiscal year 2023 at a tax rate for general purposes in the sum of 1.9 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of 19 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation, and levying a separate assessment dedicated to the Plymouth Township Fire Services on all property within the township for the fiscal year 2023 at the rate of .72 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of 7.2 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. Section 3, any ordinance or part of ordinance conflicting with this ordinance shall be and the same is hereby repealed insofar as the same affects this ordinance. Section 4, in accordance with Section 70D, 702D of the Home Rule Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon adoption, ordained and enacted by Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, this 12th day of December 2022. Council of Plymouth Township by Christopher G. Manero, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve the 2023 budget ordinance?
So moved.
A motion from Ms. Bramblett, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Our next item is a, under administration is a sewer rate increase ordinance for 2023. This is for first and final consideration. And Mr. Clark, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Manero. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 23, Water Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Article 2, Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Division 3, Rates and Charges of the Plymouth Township Code, Ordinance 345 as amended, Section 23-43A, Rentals or Rates to Increase the Rentals and Rates for Sanitary Sewage for Metered Water Users Within the Township. The Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, does hereby enact and ordain the following. Section 1, Article 2, Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Division 3, Rates and Charges, Section 23-43, Rentals or Rates, Section A, Conshohocken Area Sewer District and Plymouth Area Sewer District. Number 1, Rates for Metered Water Users of the Plymouth Township Code, Ordinances Number 345 as amended, shall be amended in its entirety as follows. Section 23-43, Rentals or Rates, Section A, Conshohocken Area Sewer District and Plymouth Area Sewer District. Section 1, Rates for Metered Water Users, All Persons Owning Property Connecting to the Sewer System and Served with metered water service shall pay a quarterly rental for sanitary sewer service based on the quantity of water used, as evidenced by metered readings of water meters installed and maintained by the water supplier for the purpose of measuring water purchased from said water supplier, and such other meters as may be installed pursuant to any provisions of this division and subject to the minimum charges hereinafter provided all as follows. A, Sewage Collection Charge, applicable to all quantities of water consumed, first 7,000 gallons or less per quarter, a minimum of $24.46. All over 7,000 gallons per quarter, per 1,000 gallons per quarter, with $1.68. Sewage Treatment Charge, all applicable to all, applicable to all quantities of water consumed, first 7,000 gallons or less per quarter, minimum $30.80. All over 7,000 gallons per quarter, per 1,000 gallons per quarter, $2.17. Section 2, Article 2, Sewer and Sewage Disposal, Division 3, Rates and Charges, Section 23-43, Rentals or Rates, Section A, Conshohocken Area Sewer District and Plymouth Area Sewer District. Section 2, Rates for Non-Metered Users of the Plymouth Township Code, Ordinance Number 345, as amended, shall remain the same as follows. B, Rates for Non-Metered Water Users, All Persons Owning Property Connecting to the Sewer System and Served with Water Service, all of which water is un-metered, shall pay a quarterly rental for sanitary sewer service as follows. One, Sewage Collection Charge, $37.43 per quarter. Sewage Treatment Charge, $47.07 per quarter. The township reserves the right to require the payment of additional charges for the collection and treatment of sanitary sewage from un-metered commercial, public, and industrial users. Section 3, The Effective Date, The Sewer Rate Set Forth Herein Shall Be Effective Commencing the First Calendar Quarter of 2023. Section 4, Except As Specifically Hereby Amended, Article 2, Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Division 3, Rates and Charges, Section 23-43, Rentals or Rates of the Plymouth Township Code, Ordinance Number 345 as amended, is hereby ratified and confirmed in its entirety. Section 5, If Any Provision or Part of This Ordinance is Held Invalid, The Remaining Provisions and Parts of This Ordinance shall not be affected thereby. If the application of this ordinance or any of its provisions or parts to any person's property or circumstances is held invalid, the application of this ordinance to other person's property or circumstances shall not be affected thereby. Ordained and enacted by the Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, this 12th day of December 2022, Council of Plymouth Township by Christopher G. Manero, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve the sewer rate ordinance?
So moved.
A motion from Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney. Comments or questions from council?
The only thing I'll say is I, in the seven years I've been on council, I've learned more about sewage than any topic that I previously didn't know much about. But just to reiterate, we had a very big decision to make a couple of years ago when we looked at the possibility of selling our sewer system, primarily for revenue to complete the township building and police station renovation. And, you know, we do have a small increase for this year's sewer rate, which is going to roughly equate for the average household to an increase of about $5 per quarter. That, you know, that is going to be something sort of standard we have to do to keep up the maintenance of our system. But had we sold our sewer system, we wouldn't really, really be able to even do this because we would not have control over the rates. And in comparison, a few townships over, you know, our quarterly rates here average $68.72 a quarter. There's municipality about, about two over down the street where their quarterly rates are an average of $327 per quarter, again compared to $68 for ours with public ownership. So this was a decision we made a couple of years ago and continues to be part of a bigger plan for, for ownership of our sewer system. So I just wanted to point that out, that while the rate increase of about $5 per quarter, you know, is small, it's you know, is small, it's so significant compared to the control that we still have over the rates of our sewer system. So, and again, the, the system is in pretty good shape as we analyzed it. But periodic projects, sewer interceptor updates over the years, we have a plan for that for the foreseeable future.
Additional comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, announcement of our reorganization meeting, Ms. Visio?
Just an announcement that Plymouth Township Council reorganization meeting will take place on Tuesday, January 3rd at 7:30 p.m.
Thank you. We have renovation project change orders, Ms. Bramblett?
Thank you. The township's construction manager, Rick Roche, from Bittenbender Construction, is recommending approval of change orders on a municipal building renovation project that have been incurred to date. These change orders include extending the contract time from 480 days to 518 days for each of the four prime contractors. In addition, the change orders that are required are as follows, from Myco Mechanical, plumbing changes and fire protection in the amount of $42,953.66. Also from Myco Mechanical, HVAC changes from escalation and delay cost in the amount of $68,885.55. This was previously agreed to, but needs to be done via a change order. From Wind Gap, site work actually gives us a credit in the amount of $113,183.98. The contract had called for conduit for a future cell tower that has now been eliminated. From Myco Mechanical, HVAC escalation and delay cost in the amount of $271,358.89. This change amount satisfies a claim that was identified in a letter from Myco dated February 15, 2022. These change orders are necessary documents for the contractors. I make a motion that the township approves these change orders.
There's a motion from Ms. Bramblett, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish, comments or questions from council? And just, I guess, overall summary, we're looking at fall of '23 as the estimated. This meeting next year will hopefully be taking place in the, in the new township building. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Police and Public Safety, Chief, anything? Moving down to Public Works and Sewer, our snow announcement, Mr. Whitney?
All right. First one of the season. It's surprising to be back here, Honored. Winter season reminders, it is unlawful to park or abandon a car on any street within 12 hours after a snowfall of three inches or more. Vehicles will be towed at the owner's expense. Use off-street parking when snow is predicted. When you park your car in the driveway, there's less snow to shovel. On-street parking, only where no off-street parking is available, is only permitted on the even-numbered side of the street in even years and on the odd-numbered side of the street in odd years. Never approach moving snow removal equipment. Just because you can see the driver doesn't mean he can see you. We try to keep our crews fresh and rested, but extended weather emergencies can mean long hours for township employees. Please keep children and pets off the streets. Property owners are required to clear their sidewalks at least 30 inches wide within 36 hours after the snow stops. When shoveling your driveway, it's suggested that you pile snow to the right. This will prevent the plow from covering your driveway opening again. Don't shovel or plow snow into the street. The plows will just move it back onto your driveway or sidewalk. If the plow has already passed, do not push snow from your driveway into the street. It will refreeze and create a hazard. If there is a fire hydrant by your home, consider adopting it. You know where it is. If it's obscured by snow, fire companies responding to emergencies may not find it. Clearing the snow from the hydrant protects you and your neighbors. That is it for the snow announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Not going to need that. Sure.
If you want some done?
It's done.
Or you want each one?
They can all, they can all.
Next, we have a recycling consortium ordinance for first and final consideration, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Manero. This is an ordinance of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, ratifying an intergovernmental agreement entered into by Plymouth Township, White Marsh Township, Whitpain Township, and Upper Dublin Township, Pennsylvania, authorizing an agreement for collection of residential and commercial recycling data and preparation of a PADEP 904 Recycling Grant Applications, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and providing a severability clause. Whereas by intergovernmental agreement dated, I don't think it's been executed as of yet, the agreement Plymouth Township entered into or will enter into an agreement with White Marsh Township, Whitpain Township, and Upper Dublin Township collectively, the municipalities, which are authorized, authorizes municipalities to enter into agreements to collect residential and commercial recycling data and prepare residential and commercial recycling data and prepare PADEP 904 Recycling Grant Applications on behalf of the municipalities. And whereas the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act 53 PACS, Section 2301, requires all intergovernmental agreements to be approved by ordinance. And whereas Plymouth Township desires to ratify and approve the agreement by the enactment of this ordinance, now therefore it is hereby ordained and enacted by the Council of Plymouth Township as follows. One, the agreement, a copy of which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, is hereby ratified and approved pursuant to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act 53 PACS, Section 2301. Section 2, All Other Provisions of the Township's Code of Ordinances as amended shall remain in full force and effect. All other ordinance or provisions of the Township Code of Ordinances inconsistent herewith or in conflict with any of the terms hereof are, to the extent of said inconsistencies or conflicts, are hereby specifically repealed. Section 3, The provisions of this ordinance are severable. If any section, clause, sentence, part, or provision thereof shall be held illegal, invalid, or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, such decision of the court shall not affect or impair any of the remaining sections, clauses, sentences, parts, or provisions of this ordinance. It is hereby declared to be the intent of Plymouth Township Council that this ordinance would have been adopted if such illegal, invalid, or unconstitutional section, clause, sentence, or part of a provision had not been included herein. Ordained and adopted this 12th day of December 2022, Plymouth Township Council by Christopher G. Manero, Chair.
Is there a motion to approve the recycling consortium ordinance?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Engineering, anything tonight?
Nothing new.
Okay. Moving down to subdivision and land development. Plans that are currently under review, SMG Hotels 201 Plymouth Road Extension, Ms. Visio?
Mr. Chair, I have a letter from Mr. Craig Lewis, representing 201 Plymouth Road LLC and SMG Hotels. The applicant has filed an application seeking land development approval. They continue to work on necessary revision to their plans and have requested an extension up to and including December 31st, 2023. I make a motion that we...
Okay, a motion from Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, under extension requests is 2070 Butler Pike, Ms. Bandish?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a letter here from Craig R. Lewis regarding the land development application of Kelman &amp; Magliari of 2070 Upper Pike in Plymouth Meeting. And they're asking for an extension of the timeframe up to and including December 31st, 2023. I make a motion that we approve this extension.
There's a motion from Ms. Bandish, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And our final extension under projects under review is 906 Ridge Pike, Mr. Whitney?
All right. This is in regards to application of two farms, Royal Farms on 906 Ridge Pike, asking for an extension from March 1st, 2023. And I would make a motion that we grant this.
A motion for Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Chair votes in favor. Down to conditionally approved projects that have not yet been recorded, we have two extension requests. The first one is for Metroplex Phase 3, Ms. Bandish?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a letter from Craig R. Lewis, representing Metroplex Corporate Center, Phase 3, the land development application. They are requesting an additional extension of the 90-day period up to and including December 31st, 2023. I make a motion that we grant this extension.
And there's a motion from Ms. Bandish, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Visio, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next extension request is for 2928 Walton Road, Ms. Visio?
Mr. Chair, I have a letter from Craig Lewis regarding the property of 2928 Walton, Class 2928 Walton LP. It is a request for final approval, extension of final approval up to a 90-day period up to and including December 31st, 2023. And I make a motion that we accept this extension.
A motion from Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish, comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And projects that are currently under construction, we have an escrow release for Plymouth Meeting Park, Ms. Bandish?
Yes, I have a letter here from Tim Woodrow of Woodrow &amp; Associates, saying that the $24,000 that has been held in escrow against Lot 6 on Lee Drive, it was pending the assurance of a proper installation of certain stormwater management. And it's confirmed that the detention basin has been installed. So we are now recommending that these escrow funds be released. I make a motion that we do so.
There's a motion from Ms. Bandish, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney, comments, questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to our zoning hearings for this month, Ms. Visio?
So the Zoning Hearing Board of Plymouth Township will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 19th, commencing at 7:00 p.m. at the Greater Plymouth Community Center on 2910 John Road on the following four applications. The first is Freedom Fence, Christina Oldham, on an application for a variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 342 as amended, Article 19, Section 1909.E. The variance requested is as follows, to allow a fence in a front yard. This property is located at 118 Sebastian Lane in a B residential zoning district. The second is Jared Basewitz, on an application for variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 342 as amended, Article 19, Section 1909.E. This variance requested is as follows, also to allow a fence in a front yard. This property is located at 146 Alexander Drive in a B residential zoning district. The third is Brandon Savron Esquire for Pritzker Law Group, representing veterinary emergency group, Gricksmore Plymouth Square LLC, on an application for a variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 342 as amended, Article 11, Section 10000. The variance requested is as follows, to allow emergency veterinary care for pets. This property is located at 200 Ridge Pike in the Shopping Center zoning district. And the fourth is Greg Lavine, on an application for variances from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 342 as amended, Article 4, Section 402.C2, Article 18, Section 1800E, and Article 19, Section 1908.G2. The variances requested are as follows. To allow a side yard setback of 36.5 feet, where at least 50 feet is required. To allow 189% extension of a non-conformity, where a maximum of 25% is allowed. To allow a detached garage, a side yard setback of 21 feet 9 inches, where a minimum of 50 feet is required. This property is located at 2341 Hickory Road in a double A residential zoning district. Any citizen of Plymouth Township or interested party may attend a public hearing and have opportunity to learn about these matters.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Visio. Moving down to parks and recreation, our upcoming events, Ms. Bramblett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The winter brochure is now available, either online or at the front desk. Breakfast with Santa will be held on Saturday, December 17th. The Holiday Lights Contest Judging is going on now from December 9th through December 15th. The GPCC Holiday Eve Programming Pool and Fitness will be 1224 and 1231. Veterans' banners at the GPCC Park. The deadline to apply for those banners to honor the veterans in your life is going to be April 1st. The bench pavers and tree memorials at our parks in the GPCC Center is ongoing. And winter program sponsorships are being sought in January. Please come and enjoy all of these holiday events. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bramblett. And a big thank you to anybody who was at our tree lighting last, was it last, two weeks ago? Last week? Two weeks ago? It was a very successful event for us and glad to do that for the community. Moving down to miscellaneous and old business, Citizen Board Vacancy Announcement, Mr. Whitney?
All residents wishing to serve on the following citizen boards are asked to submit their resume or a letter sharing their interest to the Township Manager, at the 7100 Valverde Building Meeting, PA 19462, or probably better, considering the township building's under renovation, via email to kwise@plymouthtownship.org. The following citizen board positions are open. Three positions on the Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board, two positions on the Historical Architectural Review Board, a position on East Norton Plymouth-Whitpain Joint Sewer Authority, and a position on the Environmental Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Next item is an appointment to the East Norton Plymouth-Whitpain Joint Sewer Authority. And this would be an appointment to fulfill the remaining part of an empty term, which goes through the end of this calendar year, 2022. And I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Kyle Elliott to fill that vacancy on the East Norton Plymouth-Whitpain Joint Sewer Authority. Is there a second?
Second.
Now to roll the dice and pick who seconded it. I'm going to give it to Ms. Bandish, the second there. Any comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr., Ms., I'm sorry, getting my Mr. and Mrs. confused. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Is there any audience participation for tonight?
Yes.
And all you need to do, if you want to speak, you just need to come up to the seat, state your name, whether or not you're a Plymouth Township resident, and then please state your concerns, questions, comments.
My name's Carol Betham, 519 O.M. Street, a Plymouth Township resident. How many new firemen, fire drivers are we hiring?
So, I'll say, we do not hire any members of the fire companies. The fire companies are, well, the fire companies have some paid positions, but they're, they're hired by the fire companies, and most of them are volunteers. So we actually do not hire anybody for the fire companies.
Sir, they're not paid employees for Plymouth Township?
That's correct. They're paid employees of the fire companies.
And do we give the fire company money for this?
We, we give an allowance to the fire company every year. We can't dictate how they spend it, but they give us requests and we provide them funding.
Do, are we giving Plymouth Ambulance Association money?
We give, we do give...
Can I ask why?
We do give them a contribution as well.[1773.76]
Two years ago, when I brought this up, you said we have nothing to do with Plymouth Ambulance.
Well, they're not, we do not, they're not part of us. They're a community organization, just like the fire companies are, for the health, safety, and welfare of the township.
With all the shenanigans that went on?
Well, that's been corrected and they've already, that's already been-
Those three men aren't on it no more?
I don't-
They are not.
It's before my time.
All right. Okay. The bulletin magazine that you send out to us. There's two things I would like to ask you if you could put in the magazine that you used to. When there's a street light out, you're supposed to call the township, give them the pole number, and it will get fixed. And I did that and our street light in the middle of our block was fixed within a week. Now, there's one at the, the end of the street in the Culversack that's out, and there's one at Light and Fulton that's out. I didn't call about them, I just called about mine on my street. And then another thing. A lot of people get rent rebates when they do their income tax because of low income. Colonial School District has a rebate. If you're under, if you qualified for the rent rebate, you'll qualify for the Colonial School District rebate. It's the same application as the one you do for the state when you do your income tax. But it's not in the book. It's in White Marsh's book, it's in Concha Hawkins' book, it was in the school calendar. Is there any way you could just put a few of these things in the bulletin so people know about it?
I don't think that's difficult to do. Just a notice, just a, sort of just a little notice in there?
Yeah. I mean, I tell everybody at Bingo and they're all doing it now. And they got, the average is $200 you get back, but it's something.
They owe you.
Yeah. Yeah, they send you a check.
I mean, the people you're telling about, they should give you a little color.
No, it's, well, it's done now for the year.
Right, right.
But it's just something to think about.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Artis Lucas and I'm a resident of Plymouth Meeting, Plymouth Township. I have two letters as well that go along with this. We are here, most of us are here, to discuss the situation on Concha Hawkins Road and Cuny Town, where there is a lot of speeding, a lot of problems with speeding and traffic. And we, I have spoken with Sergeant Costello on multiple occasions. Sergeant Costello has told me everything from he can't make his police officers pull people over for speeding to the speed limit that they have to go by is 35 miles an hour, not 25 miles an hour, which is the posted speed limit. He has said that he has people down there all the time. We live down there, I work from home, there's no one down there. There is no one on Light Street. We have had several situations where the children that get off the school bus at Light Street and Concha Hawkins Road, they, the cars will go around or just drive through where the bus has stopped. There was a child that was almost hit by a car on that road during that situation. We are asking that the police come down at some point to the township border, which is past Light Street, and begin to pull people over for speeding. And that includes the trucks that come bombing down the road in both directions. Yes, they have set up speed things that tell them, people how fast they're going. That just tells people how fast they're speeding. It doesn't control the speed. It does not. And any of you that have been down on Concha Hawkins Road know how dangerous that road actually is. And I have people here who I think would like to speak up and have, would like to share their experiences. In the meantime, I'll give you guys this or get the police officer-
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Bruich. I am a resident of Plymouth Township on Old Elm Street, right near Light Street. I've lived there 10 years currently, but I was married to a former resident and lived there for seven years at that time, so I've been here a long time. I too have spoken to Sergeant Costello. At times, he does place a police car on Light Street, but it's few and far between that these incidents happen. When I've spoken to Sergeant Costello, he's told me that it's PennDOT's responsibility to put any controls at that area because Concha Hawkins is a state road. Now, if you cross over the border, right down the street, PennDOT granted Concha Hawkins Borough the permission to put a stop, a crosswalk and a pedestrian crossing sign. So I don't see why that can't be done here. In fact, I printed out the application and spoke to someone at PennDOT today. And it's just a matter of filling out an application to get a traffic signal.
Who fills that out?
I'm sorry, what?
Who fills that out? Residents of the township?
The municipality fills it out.
Thank you.
It's a bus stop. And I think that is the most significant piece of this. Artis is right. Yes, there's the two blinking signs, but I've done it myself. I'm like, oh, it's telling me how fast it's going and it's blinking, but no one stops. And I'm there every morning walking my dog with Tommy Rossi, the crossing guard, who's actually a resident of Concha Hawkins, but he has screamed at people, waving his stop sign. They go around the bus if the bus is there, they fly down the street. It's only a matter of time. I lived there in Cuny Town in 2002, 2003, when it was the black sheep of Plymouth Township. And it is not that at this point. There are families moving in, there are children moving in, there are people with pets. Skookel River Trail is right across the street. It takes me five solid minutes to stand there at times and wait to cross the street with my dog because no one stops. But if I go down to the Corson Street where there's the crosswalk, I mean, granted, it's a little dicey. Do you want to just step in the middle of the street? But if I do, they stop. If I do that where there's no crosswalk? You know, I mean, this has been going on for a long time. And when I spoke to the woman at PennDOT today, I was on mediation for work, so I didn't have the opportunity to finish my conversation, but we're supposed to resume our call tomorrow. Because she was of the understanding that they'd already allowed one to be put in. And I explained, that's what, how many feet down the road at Concha Hawkins, where they, there's a crosswalk there. There's not a bus stop there, there's not a crossing guard there. So it makes the most rational and logical sense that there should be, at minimum, a crosswalk with a pedestrian sign, maybe even flashing lights, ideally a stop sign, but I'm willing to start with at least a crosswalk.
Is that at Light Street?
Light Street and Concha Hawkins Road, yeah.
Is that application from the PennDOT website?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just printed it and just, I mean, I can get it to you. I just got it right online and I thought to myself, is it really this easy? I mean, of course, it's not going to be. It's the state. Of course, it'll take a little bit of work, but I don't appreciate being told, oh, it's PennDOT's responsibility. And Sergeant Costello told me that he spoke to PennDOT. But if he spoke to PennDOT, clearly Concha Hawkins spoke to PennDOT and got the okay. And I think this corner has much more reason or necessity for such either a crosswalk, stop sign, flashing lights, something, because it's, there's kids. I mean, minimum, the kids start going there at what, I think the earliest bus is like 7:00?
Yeah.
7:15? I'm normally there around 20 after 8:00 and there's three kids that I hang out with, with my dog. And, I mean, it, cars just fly. And I know that they said they did a traffic study and 15% of the people, or 85% are going the speed limit. But it's 40 miles an hour up the street and then it's 25. So you cannot tell me that cars are going 25 miles an hour. I can tell you that. So I'm just here because Artis had wanted some community support and I think something needs to be done, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Hammett. I'm a Plymouth Township resident for 45 years now, in Cuny Town. Since they put the stop sign in, that's helped from the other stop sign up around the corner. Now, at least we don't have cars running through the houses because they would fly down around the corner and the first and second houses have been hit multiple times with cars. Now, they're just running the stop sign now, especially since they put the sports fields in. They just run the stop sign, especially when they get backed out, a game lets out. They just come flying down there, don't even bother stopping at the stop sign. Forty, put 40-plus miles an hour through 25 mile an hour zone. And if you pull out slow and do 25 miles an hour, next thing you know, cars are slamming on their brakes so they don't hit you. And then my wife was out there the other day. She was only doing 25. They got mad, drove around her in no passing zone. So this is how bad it is. And pretty much, I mean, the only way that is before they said, uh, yeah, there hasn't been accidents down there. Yeah, when the road's dug up and you can't go 25 miles an hour, that's the only time that this traffic is safe. If you dug some ditches across the road and let the people slam into them, it'd slow down. But that's not, that's not something that's going to happen. Or when it had it dug up for the sewers and now it's, now there's flagmen out there because it's only one lane. It's slowed down a little bit once the flagmen come out. They're tearing through there again. And somebody's going to kill you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live on Fulton Street, okay? I smoke.
Oh, sorry, I hate to ask you, I know you already told you. Could you just tell us your name one more time?
Edith Kinderdine.
Thank you.
I live on Fulton Street, I smoke, and I stand outside on my porch. And I can tell you right now, the stop sign that's there at Concha Hawkins Road and Old Elm, New Elm, okay? They don't stop because you cannot go from that stop sign doing 50. If you come to a complete stop and hit the park doing 50, there's no way. They come underneath that bridge and I sit at the bus stop. I take my grandson to the bus stop in the morning and pick him up in the afternoon. I've done it from when he was in kindergarten, okay? They come underneath that bridge in the opposite lane. When they come down Concha Hawkins Road, they're doing over 40, okay? They do not stop. So many times, my granddaughter, my son-in-law, my daughter, me, myself, have been almost hit because people don't stop. They don't stop at that stop sign. When the condos were put up in Concha Hawkins, they readjusted everything there. When the condos were put up at the bottom there, they readjusted the lay of Caldwell Lane. They widened the railroad bridge to accommodate those people. Now those buildings are going up, those office buildings. Now they're going to do something, Plymouth Township, Concha Hawkins are going to do something to accommodate those people. When somebody put the stop sign up at that little side street there, it slowed that traffic down, but everybody complained. Townships came in, they took the stop signs out.
Which stop sign was removed at what street?
What was that street, Art? What's that little side street?
Is it Corson?
Corson.
Is that in Concha Hawkins or in-
It's part of, it's right on the borderline, Concha Hawkins and Plymouth, okay? Somebody put a three-way stop sign, it was removed, okay? Now-
But was that a Concha Hawkins stop sign?
It was a three-way, so it was Plymouth and Concha Hawkins.
Only PennDOT can grant-
Somebody put a stop sign up, but somebody removed it. It did slow them down.
That was the state that removed it?
It's the state that does it.
When these people stood in the middle of the street with their children, they were threatened they were going to be arrested, okay? My grandson and his three friends were dropped off down at Craven Street, had to walk underneath of the bridge to come home, okay? Little boy up the street has a broken leg. They had to walk without a sidewalk to come home. And I didn't know that they were being dropped off down at Craven Street, okay? They were almost hit three times coming home because of the speed of the cars. Police officers have been sitting in front of Tornetta's. We're blowing our horn because the cars are speeding. The cars are going around the buses, we're blowing our horns, nobody's doing anything, okay? The bus drivers are blowing their horns, nobody's doing nothing. The lady up the street, she would have been here tonight, but her husband got sick. She sees coming down Concha Hawkins Road. You've been on my street. I don't know if you've been on my street, Nick, you've been on my street, Karen, you've been on my street. Okay? You've been on my street. Stand here and look at them. You could see them. And it goes on from early in the morning till late at night, the screeching of the tires. You don't know how many accidents at nighttime happen at that stop because they don't stop. You could stop there, but he's not going to stop, he's not going to stop, and she's not going to stop. They don't stop. They just keep on going. How many times over the years, Mrs. Bany's house has been hit? Right? Am I right?
Yeah.
And that, one of those letters is from the person that bought-
Exactly. Look at the bridge. How many times the bridge has been hit? Now, when the project was going on with Lafayette Street and all, we were told there was going to be another red light put on Concha Hawkins Road. Go back in the archives. Anybody, I'm 65 and I remember it, and a lot of my neighbors remember. There was another red light that was going to be placed on Concha Hawkins Road. Where's the red light?
What intersection were they going to put a red light?
Oh, well, you see, there was a debate about that because when Mr. Tornetta wanted his fields, he wanted it placed there and they said, no. We wanted it placed by the mansion house, okay? And that was up for debate. Somebody in Plymouth Township shot it down. We wanted it placed there to stop it, to stop that traffic from having that free rein from under the bridge because they were going to dump the turnpike off and all that. That was that big project that was supposed to happen. You know, have you been on Lafayette Street? I was on Lafayette Street the one day. There was no stop sign. The next day I was on Lafayette Street, there's a stop sign in the middle of the road. Miraculously, there was this three-way stop sign. Somebody has to do something before a kid gets killed or before somebody gets killed. I've been at the bus stop waiting for my grandson. My neighbor, she's an elderly neighbor, she's 75 years old, drives, she has a job, she goes to work every day. She goes to pull out. Guy came barreling down the road, took the ass end of her car out, never even bothered stopping. Went right around her and just kept on going. And there she was, sitting there. By the time you call the police, what are you going to do? He's gone. She's sitting there. She's hurt. You can't do nothing. Something has to be done. You've got to stop them. You've got to stop them. And it's not, it's not, it's locals. A lot of it is the people from Mr. Tornetta's fields. They don't feel that they should have to stop. I'm coming down Concha Hawkins Road. They're coming, they're just coming out. They don't stop. They don't stop at those stop signs. They just pour out of there. They don't feel that they should stop. They don't feel they should have to stop at the stop sign. They don't feel that they should have to stop anywhere. I live there. I see it every day. Every day I see it. And I tell my daughter, my grandson gets mad at my daughter. She says, no, you can't go to your friend's house. No, you can't go down to Elm Street. No, you can't go down there. But mom, my friends are there. And a lot of the parents from the other street. No, you can't go to the park because of, it's not safe. There's nowhere for the kids to come up to the park. We have this park and these kids can't use the park because they can't get to the park because it's not safe. They can't get to it. And it's not fair. It's not fair to the kids on either end. They can't come up, they can't play miniature golf, they can't go to the batting cages because they can't get to it. And there's a lot of kids. There's a lot of kids in your, in your neighborhoods, correct?
Over here.
You have kids all over your neighborhood. It's not fair.
Been hit by a car, yeah.
Yeah, it's not fair to them. This gentleman right here, his daughter got dropped off for two years on the opposite side of the street. He called the township, he called the bus companies, he complained and complained and complained. The beginning of the school year, they were dropping my grandson off on the opposite side of the street and the cars wouldn't stop. I had to literally stand, 65 years old, I'm standing in the middle of the street going like this so my grandson could come across the street and be saved. So hit a 65-year-old lady because we couldn't get the cars to stop.
So when the school bus puts the sign up?
Oh, they put the sign up, nobody cares.
Go right around.
They can't, they can't angle, they're not allowed to angle the bus because it's against the law, Pennsylvania law. They don't care. They just don't care. It's locals, it's people out of the area, it, you can't, and it's track the trucks. The trucks are horrible. The trucks are horrible. And now they're doing all that construction down there? It's horrible down there. I won't even attempt- I won't even attempt to try and go left, to get out of my street, because you can't, you can't get out of there. And even to try and go right, you take your life in your own hands. My daughter says, "Mom, you're becoming a recluse." Well, I'm a, I don't wanna go out, I don't wanna take, I don't wanna go out. You can't go out. And if you do, guess what? Take your chances, I'd rather go drive the expressway. My chances of being alive are better on the expressway than they are trying to get out of my street. And these people feel the same way.
But, why don't we let some other people speak at this point?
You know? That's it, I mean, I watch it, and I'm telling you. Come stand on my porch, and spend the day on my porch, I'll make you a cup of coffee. Come spend the day on my porch, I've already invited you, Karen, I've already invited you, Catherine, I've invited Nick. Come spend, spend the day on my porch. First, come, spend the day on my porch, I'll make you coffee. Sit there, you can watch exactly what happens, on that road. Just on my end, let alone on their end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's say my name, my name's Warren Lair, I live at six forty-three Fulton Street, I lived there for thirty-two years. As far as Concha Hocken Road goes, my question is, first of all, I thought Concha Hocken Borough had a building referendum on, for building, because of the, the highway conditions, and what the roads could handle for traffic. But, they're building those condos down by the river, which I heard, there's gonna be three hundred units there. Now they're gonna have to exit on this side of the river, right there, not the other side, 'cause the river's there. Now, on Concha Hocken Road, they're building that high-rise, that's at least ten or twelve stories, maybe more higher. And they just completed, that motel thing, or whatever it is, on the corner of Fayette Street. Now you take the three of them, combine them, how much traffic there's gonna be? It's, it's gonna be unfathomable, the amount of traffic. It's just gonna be jammed off twenty-four, seven, on Concha Hocken Road there. The traffic's gonna triple. And, what I'm saying is, isn't there any collaboration between, like Plymouth Township and Concha Hocken, with what they can build? I mean, anybody in any common sense should realize how much traffic that's gonna produce.
Unfortunately, we don't have any authority over what Concha Hocken approves, and what they don't approve. Um, the county, the county planning commission does make recommendations, and they do review all plans, but, we don't really have the ability to interfere with their, with their building. I wish we, I wish we could.
That's gonna be nothing but Janmott City there on Concha Hocken Road, within a year, I'd say. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
My name is Joanna Barr, I'm a resident of Plymouth Township. I live on New Elm Street, or Concha Hocken Road, or West Elm Street, however you wanna call it. I do not have a driveway. And Pendot put a small parking area, across the street in the five-hundred block, so that those of us who don't have driveways can park. When we first moved here, almost nine years ago, to this house, we knew it was a busy road. And, it was okay. We had no idea they were gonna build soccer and lacrosse fields, so that there would be, you know, an extra four thousand SUVs coming down the street, back and forth every day. We had no idea, they were gonna build a luxury apartment building, where there will be, God knows what BMWs coming down, and back and forth. And, it is not fair to those of us who have been there, who are trying to live there safely. When they talk about someone being killed, it's, it's probably gonna be me. I tried to cross the street, to get to my car, and I, I am constantly going like this. Because people come flying under the overpass, you can't see them coming, 'cause it's a bend. And then when you're trying to get out of your parking space, you have to sit there, for five minutes, trying to get out. And literally, coming here tonight, I had to wait to cross the street, a good two or three minutes. And I got in my car, and I had pulled in Ford, earlier, so I had to back out. I waited till there was no cars coming on either side, I backed out like this, and a car came under the underpass, flying at me. And you could tell, he did not want to brake. And he laid on his horn. So I quickly put my foot on the gas, and got, got out of the middle of the road, and I honked back at him. Like literally, I was almost hit, tonight, coming to this meeting. When, when I come, I work at night, and when I come home in the dark, uh, it's terrifying. And if it's raining, it's so much worse. Um, because people can't see you. At the very least, they need to put in a four-way stop at light in New Elm. At the very least. Uh, several years ago, there was a very bad accident, where this kid was come flying down, he smashed into a car coming in the opposite direction. Flew into four parked cars, totaled a car that was literally bought the day before. And we did a neighborhood petition, first to the township, and then we were told it had to go to Pendot. And, we sent it to Pendot, and they sent someone out with, they said, they sent someone out for two hours, to watch people, um, with the speed gun. And that really, no one was speeding. Well, honestly, that's a bold-faced lie, 'cause they are speeding. They, that, it will wake up the animals in the neighborhood, you can't, when a really loud truck goes down, the dogs stop, start barking, my cats jump up. They are going way too fast. And, and it's, it's gonna be so much wor, it's so much worse now with those fields. And then, with this new building coming up, I mean, my, the two neighbors to my left moved out, on Saturday. Both of them moved out Saturday. If people are coming to look at those rental properties, you know, are they even gonna wanna move in? So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I wasn't gonna talk, but she mentioned that I was here, so I'm gonna mention, um, I live on Fulton Street, been there fifteen years, and I had a problem. I'm sorry, Michael Bailey, Fulton Street, Plymouth Township resident, fifteen years. My daughter was crossing the street, and it's, it's, if you, if you know Concha Hocken Road and, and Fulton, the area where she had to get on the bus was up against steel, uh, the steel plant, and the, and the, and the fence, and the barbed wire, and there's trash over there. And one day my wife was walking my daughter across the street, the bus was on the other side with the stop, and a car literally drove around both, I mean, it just refused to stop. So, I called the police, no offense, nothing was done. I called the school, and finally got a hold of the bus, whoever runs the charge of the bus, and they fixed it, they changed the whole route, now the bus comes on the other side, so the kids don't have to cross the street. So that, I, I think that's still in effect, so they don't have to cross the street.
No, they stopped that file.
So, that's, and I don't wanna berate anybody here, but about three or four nights ago, someone knocked on my door about this meeting, about this road. So, in the last week, I spent a total of three hours, parked outside Fulton Street, with my camera. How many cars do you think I got blow, blow, how many cars do you think I got blown through a stop sign? Anyone take a guess? Five. And I'm talking thirty, forty miles an hour, going through a stop sign. So I got it right here. So whatever we gotta do, we gotta do it. It's not safe, and when some kid gets, gets killed, don't act like you didn't hear about from us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
What's going, guys? I'm Alex, Alex Homly, I live on five oh six, uh, New Elm Street, well, now everyone knows where I live, I guess, but, uh, just bought my house about two and a half years ago, so. Love Plymouth meeting, uh, so far, you know, I like the new fields, I like, you know, Scrooge River Trail. Um, I think it's great that Crackle Barrel's getting a liquor license, it sounds like, so I'll be there for the most part, for sure. Um, only thing I'm not too fond about is that traffic situation, so, um, basically not gonna, you know, be the dead horse here, but, a lot of what everyone else is saying is definitely true. Um, I think it'd be cool if we could, maybe do some sort of enforcement cameras, so ticketing system, I, I don't know if that's been, um, thought about or proposed before. You know, I think just something needs to happen before it's, uh, you know, before someone gets killed, or, you know, it's just, uh, just a matter of time, so. That's it, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do wanna let you guys know, I did ask Sergeant Costello to be here tonight.
Hey there, I'm Rick Petrowski, old Elmond Light Street, Concha Hocken, I approached the council a couple months back. And I had the issue with Elmond Light with the unpaved road, with Mr. Tener has his equipment in the back of the road back there, Nick, you come look at that?
I did, I came from the chief.
Yeah, that's all right. The chief was gracious enough, he sent the sergeant down, the next morning he was there on time, he sent code enforcement down too, which was great, you know what I mean? He came down, he said, "I will see Mr. Tornetta." Okay. Nothing happened in the last one. So the other morning, six thirty-three in the morning, wow boom!
I'm at four sixty-nine.
I'm like, whatever.
I just have to, I just, I was just supposed to, we have to keep the, the public comment to us and not to them. You're welcome to come back up again.
Yes, sir, come back up. Six thirty-three in the morning, it sounded like a bomb went off. I'm like, Nick, did you see the area where I'm talking about, where the hump in the road is? I'm like, come on, I thought there was a noise, nu, nu, uh, noise ordinance. Right? Seven o'clock, you're not allowed to make noise in town until seven o'clock. That's a little uncalled for, six thirty-three, like, like somebody out there, Sam's, come on, it sounded like something blew up, according. And the traffic on Concha Hocken State Road, I don't go down to Light Street to get out, I go down to Corson Street. You take your lighter in your hand, you're gonna try to turn left, onto Concha Hocken State Road, it's, it's a bad time, I just don't do it, neither does my wife. And the other, the other problem is on the road, the traffic backs up, to the Blue Room Bridge or something, you can't even get out, you're locked, you're locked in there sometimes, it's very pathetic, you know what I mean? But, the, the, I'm little, it's about, nothing ever happened, with that, just, nothing ever happened? Okay, I came, I came, I get out. So, it's not a police matter, it's not, nothing they can, it's not, it, uh, code enforcement, nothing happened. And I called again, I say, I called, left a message, there's no return call, okay. Just say, "No, he's not gonna do nothing, no." There was nothing, nothing. No follow, no follow-up.
Do we know anything about the resolution to that, or if there's anything from Jim or anybody on that one?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I'll have to check. Um, I mean, I think we, we.
I have some answers, just, and I'd like to be able to address everybody here, they definitely deserve, so whenever, you know, by the chance.
Yeah, but, but six thirty-three in the morning, nobody needs to be waking up and upset, come on, that's, that's a little unfair, you know? That kinda noise, that, I mean, there's, somebody else could testify about that too. And thank you for your time, I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm, I'm gonna head out. Oh, bye, bye, honey.
Hi, my name is Amy Teeters, I am on, um, Old Elm Street. The light, at, in the cul-de-sac, that is in front of my house, I wasn't aware that I can, that I need to call about that. But, um, my, I have four teenagers. Three of them are driving right now, they're brand-new drivers. And pulling out of Light Street, gives me a heart attack. I have spoken to a police officer that was standing there, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, um, that he did have a car parked there. And, I mentioned to him that I could not see, turning, when I turned left, I don't have one of those big SUVs, probably never. So, when I'm trying to look, to see if there's cars coming, I can't see. There's, because the, the cars are still there, or whatever. He says that I can pull up, to the line. But as I'm pulling up to the line, I'm gonna get, you know, my, the front end of my car taken off, because people don't stop, people don't slow down. My kids are also at that corner, at six thirty in the morning, getting on the bus, all three of, all three of my kids. And my other daughter's going to Monka, and she's, you know, pulling out that early too, sometimes, and it's just not safe, for the kids to be on that corner. I don't know, like, obviously, if there is some stop signs there, that would be helpful. At least, I don't know if this is the township thing, whether there's big reflector mirrors, that you can kinda see the other corner, you know, the, the cotty corner, or whatever, that maybe you could see a little bit around that corner? That would be helpful, if, we can't get stop signs, but I really, it, they do fly right past you. They, they, all down Concha Hocken State Road, they're just flying right around you. They don't stop at the stop signs, they don't stop at the red lights, they don't, they just right, blow right through them. So there needs to be a lot more presence out there, for them to stop. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll just reiterate what he said about the noise, it starts well earlier than six thirty. I hear it at four, four thirty in the morning, I mean, depending on the time these employees and their trucks are going to work. And as silly as it may sound, it has completely ruined my sleep in Saturdays, 'cause it happens on weekends too. I don't know if there's a big, I don't, I don't, I was there the day the code enforcement came out with him, and, like, it's the shape of the road, it just needs to be paved. I don't even know, is there a stop sign there? There's none. Okay, well, that at least makes me feel better, 'cause they don't stop. Maybe if there was a stop sign there, I don't know, but I just, it probably would fix it with the road, I mean, it is, it set, it turns, the noise, my neighbor has one of those, like, clap-learn lights. And the noise turns on her lights, because that's how loud and obnoxious it is. Our bedroom, we're at four sixty-nine, so, in our bedroom, that's where you hear it. So it's almost like, I'd rather just hang out in my living room in the morning, 'cause then you don't hear it, but. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity, I have to go, but I just wanted to, to bolster what he said, and then the stop sign, shoot it. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to say, I do sympathize with all of you, nothing that you said, well, there are some things that I don't completely agree with, but I, I think it's 'cause I need to explain it. But the problems that you say are there, I've worked here for thirty-four years, it's, it's scary, it's, it's dangerous, especially that area there, it's tight, it's congested with traffic, and people are going way too fast.
Sorry to go identify yourself, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm the chief, John Merciari. There was a bunch of different things here, I'm try, uh, I'll, I'll start off with the last thing, which was about the, the noise at, going into Tornetta's property. Uh, I never like to say whether it's a police matter or not, we always try and, and, and help, whatever these are. So, in that issue, uh, we got together with code enforcement, even code enforcement said, it's, it's nothing that we can mandate. Now, the noise, we can take care of, and if you call us when there's noise, if it's early in the morning, code enforcement isn't there, we'll come down and we'll cite them for violating the noise ordinance. I've been trying to do this delicately, because we have to work with Mr. Tornetta, it's his property, and, and we're asking him, as opposed to mandating him, 'cause we don't have the, the teeth to do that. But the noise, we can handle, and, and, and I would hope that that would speed him along. So what we have to do is call us, if it's three, four in the morning, and yes, we will cite him for the noise, uh, ordinance. A lot of people talked about the stop signs. And I know the, I think the one woman who said it left, I wish she was here, but, uh, Sergeant Costello, when he says it's Pendot's responsibility, what he's trying to say, if he didn't say it more clearly, it's, it's, it's their purview, it's their decision. Somebody talked about that there was a stop sign on Corson's Lane, I remember that, long time ago. And what happened was, was Concha Hocken put it up, out of necessity, because they need to stop people, and Pendot would come during the day, and they would rip the sign out, and Concha Hocken would come at night, and they'd put it back. Until they finally, Concha Hocken gave up, because Pendot said, "You're not putting one here, you, it, it doesn't justify," according to them. And I'm not trying to beat up on Pendot either, but they're not as concerned with the community as we are, because they got the whole state, and they have rules, and those rules apply blanketly, everywhere. So when they say, uh, people are speeding, they say stop signs aren't for speed, so they're not gonna put one there. If they say, it has to justify how many accidents are there, I pulled up our statistics before I came here, within three years, there've been zero accidents in that small area. That's not to say it's not very dangerous, I know it's dangerous, I'm surprised there hasn't been an accident. Uh, but those are the statistics that they, they, they demand, and they come and they do it themselves, like somebody said, they came out there for two hours, and they were satisfied. I have had the speed taken, and the eighty-five percent, eighty-fifth percentile.
The time is now eight thirty, and the Greater Plymouth Community Center will be closing in a half hour. Once again, the time is now eight thirty, and the Greater Plymouth Community Center will be closing in a half hour.
The eighty-fifth percentile is well over the speed limit, and that was another issue that somebody brought up, uh, about, um, how we can't cite them unless they're going so fast. Speeding, believe it or not, again, it's, it's a state law, has to be eleven miles over the speed limit, before we can actually have cause to stop somebody for speeding. If they're doing something else, we can stop them, but if it's speeding that they're doing, if it says twenty-five, we can't even stop them until we've timed them going thirty-six. And that's the law. It's terrible. Now, the eighty-fifth percentile is thirty-six to forty miles an hour. Now, the 85th percentile is 36 to 40 miles an hour, which means the majority of cars are speeding, but we have to wait till we hit that, that number.
So you're saying that 85% are going over?
Eighty five, the 85th percentile is 36 to 40 miles an hour.
The other question is, where was that survey taken?
That was taken at, it was taken in your area, the New Elm, Light Street area. I don't have the exact, there's markings down there, if you've ever seen the markings in the roadway? Let's see...
Yeah, because the closer to the bridge, it means they have to, they have to stomp on it to get up to that speed by the time they get to that speed trap.
It's at the intersection of New Elm and Light Street, is where it was. I'd have to see the markings, if you see markings there, that's where it was done.
What kind, what kind of speed trap are you doing? Because I've never, I lived right there.
Yeah, no, it's not a speed trap. We put, we have either lines we put in the roadway, we have, there's something that they have to run over, or are the lights up there? I'd have to ask Sergeant Costello, but he's the one that's...
I've never say, I've never seen an electronic...
I mean, I'm sure he's not lying to me, he did it in October of 2022.
All right. We lived there, we never saw it.
Well, I'm...
So, I'm just saying, we lived there.
I understand.
I live in...
I mean, there's not gonna be a police officer there, there's not gonna be anything big that you're gonna see. That's the whole point, is so that people don't see something and slow down, if they go whatever speed they would go.
Unless with that electronic sign that they hung on the pole, and I mean, they ask it about a day before, if I read one of that.
That's true too. And believe me, I'm not here to argue with any of you, I agree with you, I wish there was more than I could do. And actually, we've asked to have meetings, so that we could explain what we do, we can hear from you guys, what you need more of, and that we can let you know what's possible. I'm happy to solicit Pendot constantly and copy all of you if you want to, so that you see the response that we get. They're not gonna do it, but I will be happy to continue to ask them, because I do this township one, we're constantly doing this. They have certain parameters, and they will come out, and they will say, "How many accidents? What's the 85th percentile on speed?" And there's one other thing that they do, they will not put a stop sign for a speeding problem. But I'll keep asking.
They put a stop sign in because children are almost getting hit, whether people are speeding or not, they're going around the school buses, that is illegal. Norristown, if they're not in Norristown, they're putting the smart cameras on the buses, so people won't get shaken to the mail.
Let me just answer her real quick. The stop signs, again, we'll continue to ask them, they wouldn't put them in that area of Concha Hocken Road, because there's so much congestion already, which is getting worse and worse, that it's just gonna stop things up even more. Again, we would keep asking, I'm just trying to be honest with you and let you know that it's nice that Pendot was so nice to that lady on the phone, but nothing gets done regardless. We're the ones that are still here, we're the ones that will answer your complaints and try. They can be as nice as they want on the phone, but it's not happening, not just on your street, on any street. I'm sorry, that area.
What can our council people do, and our state representatives? Why do we have that?
Well, again, it's a state road, they can certainly help to petition these things.
Okay, what about our representatives?
They can help to petition also.
Well, shouldn't it be up to our council people, along with the police department, to say to our representatives, "Look, we got an issue here, we need it taken care of."
It is, now we've got these...
If somebody gets really seriously hurt, and then a family is gonna come after the township, and say, "Hey, look, we've been coming back to you people and saying, hey, look, you know, my grandson could have very well been hit coming home underneath that bridge. The little boy up the street with the broken foot that had to walk from Craven Street with no sidewalks could have been hit and seriously hurt." You know what I mean? So...
And I'll just add, it is, it is our responsibility to take your concerns wherever they need to go, and the notes that I have on this page that I did not have before tonight are the first step in that process. So, we do need to hear from you, and tonight, we're hearing a lot from everybody, and that, yes, yes, and that is, that is...
Do you know how hard it is for us to get a hold of the state representative?
I agree, it's not hard for us. So, that is part of our job, is to take those concerns where we think they can hopefully best be addressed.
And I know it's, it's a holiday, it's a gift of the year, and I know everybody's...
Now, it's always, that's not an excuse, it's always something, it's always something.
But, you know, they always give you an excuse, but you know how hard, how many times have I tried to get a hold of state representatives for this issue? Well, Greg Scott is aware of the issue. And, yeah, he is, he is aware of it, and he was supposed to be here tonight, so...
But we will continue...
This has been brought up for the council?
No, we, no, this is not, this is not the first time we've heard of this area.
What's the longest been since you've heard of, since you've heard of?
Well, this is the first time, this is the first time we've heard this much, but we have had, I mean, we...
So, anything you heard previously, is there any, has there been any progress?
Well, I have to...
You just said I can reach the state, you just said, "I can reach, I can get a hold of it."
Yeah, I have to...
You just said that.
I, I did.
What has been done with what you had before tonight?
Right, well, I mean, we have, this issue of speeding has been brought up to us before.
I'm talking about specifically...
Well, I have not heard many of these concerns.
This is the first time you're hearing about Concha Hocken Road?
No, but this is, no, as I, I'm sorry, as I just said, I just took like, a whole page of notes here. This is the first time, this is the first time that I've heard many of these very, very specific, very detailed concerns.
Can I ask you another question?
Yes.
What's your timeframe to get back to us? You just said, "I can get a hold of the state," you just said that. So what kind of timeframe can you commit to tonight?
I can't commit to a timeframe, if I...
You commit to nothing.
I can commit to getting back to you as soon as I hear back from somebody, that I reach out to.
Then you're not gonna be back.
Right, I can't, yeah, so if I, if I reach out to somebody tomorrow, and hear back from them tomorrow, we will get your answers. Now, what I would like, is it would be nice if we could have perhaps one person from your group to be a point person for us, to make that communication easier, and if somebody would want to...
I don't want to make, I don't think we should make it easier for you, I think you need to run with this.
Okay, well, my point is, if I can do something to communicate to you easier, I'd like to try that.
Yeah.
I would like to have a person from this group that would, that would be a good point person, that I could email directly to make the communication...
You just gotta volunteer.
Let's make it harder, let's not communicate, let's not...
I'm not making it more difficult, we're say, I've been sitting here for 40 minutes answering, answering the concerns, that's what we're here for.
What can the police do?
Well, you haven't said anything, so that's just...
I've, I've been writing and taking notes the entire time, I have not been not listening, please don't accuse me of that. I've been more responsive than anybody I've seen in the last seven years at Moe Council. This is the first step. I'm listening to everything that's been said.
I'll ask you for a timeframe, I told him yes.
And I, if I could tell you tomorrow, I would tell you tomorrow. I don't want to tell, I don't want to tell you a timeframe I cannot commit to.
I need you to be able to follow up with me.
You can follow with me anytime you want, I will, but I can't have information until I get the information.
I all have my card.
Understood.
Okay, so, most of you have my, have my card, you've got my email address and my telephone number. What can the police be for?
The police can continue doing what we have been doing, now I know you...
There's nothing, so...
No, it's not, not...
They have not, I don't think that's fair to say that the chief has done nothing.
Okay.
Because I think he's, I think he's trying to explain, I think he's trying to explain what, I'm not cutting artists off, I consider artists a dear friend of mine, I'm trying to help the process here. The chief is trying to explain a laundry list of things that have been done, that they've tried to work on. I would like us to hear out the remainder of what he has to say, because there are a lot of things on here that address was been brought up.
What we've done is, so far this year, about 20 more traffic stops than we did all of last year, so we're ahead of what we did last year. We've put in those traffic calming measures, the signs, the flashing signs, the speed signs. I know what you're looking for, you're looking for us to be there as much as possible, and that's what I would be looking for too. We have the same concerns, I've had the same meetings with people throughout the township, and they all want the same thing. I don't have the people, I can't sit here and tell you something that's not true, I'm not gonna lie to you, I'm not gonna say we'll try harder, we'll always try harder, but the chances are, you're not gonna get more enforcement, except occasionally, than you are getting now, because I have the same problem elsewhere, where there aren't zero accidents for three years, where there are significant...
Can you move where you are from Old, or Fulton Street, from the Tornata building there, to the other side of the bridge, to Light Street? Would that, would that help people? Because then I think you're going to see the true speeding that we have, and the trucks speeding.
I'll make sure that that's not, now, the statistics I gave you, the 2022 extra stops so far, have been in that New Elm, Light Street area. But I can pull them from that other area, but the, the problems, what we just talked about, the people going through the stop sign there, won't be addressed then, but I can move them...
At least somewhat.
During the day, the lot I was talking about, that's in Fulton Street and the 500 block, during the day, that lot is fairly empty. But there is a huge SUV constantly parked there with the flat tire, and the guy, there's no intention of moving it. You could park next to him, no one coming around the bend, under the, under this 476 would see a police car there until it was too late, and you guys would yell every single time.
And Raiders cars parked there, and you could park right behind Raiders car.
Yeah.
You know, chief, the only time that they stop at the stop sign by, by our street is when you do DOT. That is the only time. And that's the only time they slow down, is when they're running DOT, that's the only time. The other day, they had DOT, you didn't see one car speeding, up or down.
And the only reason we have police there all day is because it's throughout the county, the police stop...
And it's all different townships.
Right.
All different townships. It's the only time.
The thing is, when you were saying about all there was no accidents for all this time, you got, one thing they're not figuring into that, is when they closed the road for two and a half years to put the one bridge in, opened it for a month, and then closed it for another year and a half to put the other bridge in.
But that wasn't this last three years, but I do know what you're saying.
And then there was, and then the road was dug up for about three years for the sale.
You're all absolutely right, it's, it is, I know it's dangerous, I know it's tight. The most I can do as far as enforcement is, is I'll move my people to that street as opposed to the other, but...
Well, like interbingle...
No, I understand, but I can't guarantee you that you're gonna get significantly more, I just don't have the people. I even put people there when they have to write a report, just go sit in that area and write a report if you can, but then I have to do the same thing elsewhere. This township, you know, is very congested, 500,000 vehicles come through this township every single day. I can't get rid of the congestion, and things like that building that just went up, that condo, the apartment, that's right outside our jurisdiction, we're gonna get stuck, it's like, I know it's...
I've seen lots of buildings built in there.
The apartment, the apartment...
I know that those people, it's gonna make it difficult for you to get out, I, and I'm trying to even work with Concha Hocken, but they're one-third the size of the police department of ours, and they got their own issue, but I can't steal them.
Are you responsible, or do you have access to a Steve camera, you know, those cameras that they have down in Maryland that they love to use?
I can't put anything up on, on, on that road, it's a state road.
Okay.
Now, I know that some places, like in the city, they have ones that are at red lights where they can, you know, they can take a picture.
Yeah.
We don't have access to that, we don't have a place to put something like that, but we have looked into those things, I'd have to find out what the result was, but I don't think there's anywhere there that I could actually use that. Because basically, what I have to do is get a picture of the license plate, clear picture of license plate.
But that, but you would potentially be able to approve that, that would be the end.
You know what, I have to see if I can get that approved by Pendot. We have these traffic cameras up throughout the township, we don't have anything like that there, and I think that's one of the reasons, but that I can check to see if we can put it there, and if something like that would work, I honestly don't know. I mean, when we have that throughout, the rest of the township, sometimes we can zoom in and we can see, but that's not what they're designed for, so it's, I can't give you a straight answer to that, I would have to look.
Does the township, is the township a crosswalk for Light Street? And the state is a crosswalk for New Elm?
Right.
Okay. Could you put the light on each, could you put the camera on Light Street at the corner, aid at New Elm? And then they can't remove it? It's on council property?
You know, one of the things that intrigued me, because I've tried to pull out of that parking lot that you guys have there by the Blue Route, and I tell you, you just gotta cross your fingers, there's no other way to get out of there safely. But I was intrigued by that idea of one of those big mirrors, I don't know who controls that, you know, if we could do that, but that's totally blind, you cannot see those cars coming from around that bend. And if there was something, at least you'd know when you're pulling out if you're gonna get killed or not.
Yeah.
And I, but I don't know where it would go, and who would have to approve it, but...
Because like, Light Street, I know, my son used to live in Old Elm, making a left out of that Light Street, I was just praying that I wasn't gonna get smashed.
But that little parking space that Joanna and her neighbors need to use, you can't see to get out of that little, that little area, you cannot see them coming around the bend, and if they're speeding, like I say, you look, and you cross your fingers, and then you go.
And you can't see them coming out of, from Concha Hocken either, because there's lots of cars there, there's no way.
And I don't know about the crosswalk, and then, the other thing, and Joanna, I had read that thing also about the Norristown school buses, and I don't know if Colonial School District would be interested in that, but they are going to be watching, taking photographs of the cars that don't stop at a stopped school bus, and they'll be taking pictures of their license plates. I don't know, it might be something that we can ask some of our school board members if, I don't know how they work over there with the school bus company and all, but certainly is, I was intrigued when I read about it a week ago, that that's what Norristown is doing.
I mean, Cuny Town is a nice, it is a neighborhood, it's not a million dollar, they're not million dollar houses yet, but it's a historic area, it's a nice area, the people have been there for years and years and years, a lot of them, it's hard to find a house there. But the problem is the traffic, and we love our neighborhood. And the fact that so many people have come out, and I know a lot of people left because they couldn't stick around to talk, but I appreciate you guys giving us the time to voice our concerns, and to listen to our concerns, and I know the police are trying, but it's just, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, except, I think it's pretty rough to go away.[1654.51]